Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, February 24th, 2022. The time is 2:02 PM. And we are happy to have with us today Charlie Davis and Jesse Palmer from the YMCA. Welcome. And our first order, I will see, we'll do, I'll have you do a roll call, Josh, and then we'll get right to it.
Sure, Councilmember Barber.
Yeah.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lichten.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Starset.
Here.
And Councilmember Wook.
Here.
We have all seven councils present and accounted for.
Okay. And then from staff, we have our Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Here.
And our Parks Manager Matthew Kio.
Present.
Did I miss anybody? I don't think so. Okay, well, our first order of business is Sports Complex Phase 1A and 1B Design. And I will turn it over to Jeff and Matt to tag team this.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I do want to again say thank you to Charlie and Jesse with YMCA of Pierce and Kitsap County for joining us again. For most of you, they're familiar friendly faces to that we've had many conversations with over the years. Gotten through some difficult conversations, but we're definitely got, we have momentum behind us and we're moving forward with these projects, so. They have been with us involved in this since at least 2017, if not before, talking about this. So it's been a while. And so, as you probably know, most recently, we entered into a lease agreement with the YMCA and the city back in May of 2021 for the construction of the Phase 1A portion of the Sports Complex. And I'm going to share my screen real quick, just so we can all have a good idea of what Phase 1A looks like. And I say that, and then hopefully you can see my screen now. This actually shows Phase 1A and 1B. I'm going to make it a little bit bigger, but I can't make it too much bigger. There we go. But this is Phase 1A and 1B conceptual drawing from 2020 that YMCA's consultant HBL provided. Some minor things have been adjusted, tweaked a little bit because of throughout the years, but basically this is the long and short of it. And there's a separation line. I should have drawn it on here. I guess I could do that real quick. But essentially, the separation line between Phase 1A and Phase 1B, oops, I'm off a little bit, is there. You can see that red line. But that's a separation between Phase 1A and 1B. 1A is the north, 1B is the south, and then YMCA's parking lot is here, and YMCA building is further south. This is, remains the general concept of Phase 1A. There has been discussions, and we've talked about this in the lease a little bit, but this is still the general concept. We've got Park in the North, we've got two synthetic lit turf fields, taking up a majority of the area, and then Phase 1B below it. Okay. And then I want to share, because I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, have seen this already, there's the Phase 1B. This image I'm going to share with on my screen now is from Bob Droll Associates. They created this image for, in 2020 and of 2024, the RCO grant applications that were submitted by the city on behalf of the Phase 1B project. So this is what RCO is working with the city to provide $500,000 to fund of about $3 million project. And this is the project that you will be seeing a design contract for, hopefully at the March 14th council meeting, to consider design and permitting, but more on that in a bit. So stop sharing here for a minute. So the lease that we currently have with, with the YMCA includes a conceptual grading plan, that's an appendix in there, and some site elements that we've coordinated between the city and the YMCA on both Phase 1A and 1B, and kind of lays out some responsibilities. So what we want to do today is not necessarily dig into the lease, but just talk about where we are with the design and permitting for each project. Review the schedule for each project, that's kind of within the design and permitting. And then discuss some of the details and approach surrounding each phase of the work. Now, I'm going to take the lead on most of this. Of course, Charlie and Jesse are here to answer questions. And then Matt is, is becoming very familiar with the site and leading us through other parts of this project. So we're all here to answer your questions. So I'm just going to go ahead and jump right into the project status. If there's any questions. Okay. So as I was saying, grading is something that the staff and each design team, the city's design team and YMCA's design team are looking into. The lease does call out that the grading will be a certain way, essentially that the, for the Phase 1A site, the lease says that the fields will be sloped. There will be a step drop between the two fields. And other aspects of the site will be sloped, and there will be some small, when I say small, I'm saying four feet and smaller retaining walls constructed as part of the project. But we've had some conversations with user groups for a while now, more than a year, about what it would take and benefits and pros and cons about sloping those fields and putting in those step drops between the two fields. And the user groups do not support it. They are, feel that they want flat fields, because those are competition level fields, the competition grade fields, I shouldn't say level in there, but we want to be able to accommodate what their needs are, because we don't want to build something that they can't use or that are subpar. So and then there's also that drop, step to drop between the two fields that could very well cause some issues in terms of flexibility of using the site. Because now you are guaranteed, even if there's a concrete walkway between, you cannot connect the two sites. You, with that drop in between, you have to have two separate fields. So there's some limitations on that. So we've talked about what grading will look like, what, what slopes, what impacts, what, what clearing activities will look like. And so I'm just going to bring up on the screen real quick, a quick analysis that HBL did recently that shows where on the site the cuts will occur for the project and where the, on the site the fills will occur. And it's color coded. They did a really good job on this, so hopefully it's fairly easy to see. Hopefully you can see my screen now, it's got different shades of, from red down to blue. It looks like a heat map almost, but it's really cut and fill. So anything that is the darker red, orange, and yellow, that's a cut section of the site. And you can probably tell north is to the left, south is to the right, Harbor Hill Drive is on the far side. And so the blue colors are fill areas, and you can see there's contours on here. So as we know, there's a, on the south side of this site, over where my cursor is, from here to here, there's over 20-foot drop from Harbor Hill Drive to the natural terrain over here. That's quite a bit of drop, but it's across quite a few hundred feet, so you don't notice it that much. But in order to make this level, we've got to do quite a bit of cutting and quite a bit of filling. I think from what I recall in conversations in the past with HBL, they've been able to balance the site using the material that they have on hand. So that's a big benefit, and that's actually what the city's design manual calls out. They want you to not do massive imports, not do massive excavations and truck it offsite. They want you to balance your site. And so they've done that. We don't yet have a good sense of how much impact there's going to be with the two phases and the grading options related to native vegetation. Now, I've heard a few times from members of the council and others about what are we going to do for trees? Well, just, just the initial concept of this site with parking lots, lighted turf fields, and then the necessary safety access ways and everything else around the field and meeting ADA compliance. It is not a site that is really that susceptible to just keeping as much vegetation, as natural vegetation as you can. So because you can't take a five-foot, six-foot, 10-foot cut and expect a tree there to live, and same thing on the fill side, you can't expect to have a tree live when you have to do 15, 10 feet of cut fill right next to it. So just because of the location and the existing topography, natural topography, it's not a site where you can just say that we're going to keep every tree that's out there. There is a tree survey that was initiated a while ago by HBL. They did a snapshot in a small section of the site and said, here, we want to use this as a typical section. And so we're working, we don't yet have that under contract yet, of course, with our consultant to see if that's going to be an acceptable path forward with city's community development department when planning. But we'll, hopefully we can get there and have those conversations, but that's to come. So I'm just bringing this up so that we can hopefully understand that this isn't a site where we can try and adjust the fields, adjust the Phase 1B, adjust the parking lots, and make it fit into the natural topography and make it fit into, and leave as many trees as we can and just build the fields around them. Councilmember Wook.
Yes. So if we're not leaving the trees, are we going to replant trees?
Absolutely. Now, the benefit of this site is that even with this design that you have in concept in front of you, there's still going to be a lot of area to plant new landscaping, plant new trees. Phase 1B is going to be a big area. We're going to have a lot of, and I can bring up that Phase 1B image again, but if we do these cuts and these fills over here, we're going to have to take out all the vegetation in this area and then plant new trees. But we can plant a lot of, and we're planning on planting a lot of natural vegetation around here. Now, if you remember correctly, this site was originally supposed to be all commercial development. And in so much of the commercial development, you might have a little bit more opportunity to, to maintain native vegetation, because you just put a building far away. But you don't have one large building taking up the area that really that you do with the Sports Complex. But, but the overall, I don't have the number, and we'll iron this out as we get through land use permits, but there, there's maximum impervious area coverage on this site. And from loose calculations, we're not going to, with what we're proposing, we're not going to get close to hitting that number. It's probably in the 80% range or something. So we think that we can not only just meet the minimum required vegetation to be put onto your landscaping, we think that we can probably exceed it between the Phase 1A and the Phase 1B site. Because we can, when you have fill slopes like this on both sides, you could, you need to take out the trees, of course, but you can replant them with vegetation. And that's probably a great thing to do, because as we all know, the more vegetation you have, the less erosion you have.
So I think the original design, did the original design show trees on the original design?
When you say the original, you're saying like the Phase 1A design?
1A.
I don't think Phase, I don't think HBL had any landscape shown on any of their sketches. Maybe Jesse, you remember. Happy to bring up any designs we might have, but I don't remember that there were actual landscape plans drawn up for Phase 1A at this point.
Hey, Jeff, I do have a preliminary that was included in the conceptual design report. Okay. If you'd like me to share that, I've got it ready.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Let me.
Do you have access to share? You probably do, as a panelist.
Yeah, I'm trying to, here we go. Can you all see that on your screens? Okay. So this was included in the conceptual design report, but this is an initial landscaping plan that meets the city's code and design requirements. So all of these circles you see here specify trees for the entire site. Again, this is Phase 1A, where I'm pulling my mouse around. And then as we go on, there's a little bit more detail as far as what they've proposed for meeting the new landscaping requirement. It goes beyond trees. It includes some brushes and native vegetation that gets planted as well.
So we're not looking at doing any less, are we?
Not doing any less.
No.
Amount of landscaping.
Yeah, we're, we're not proposing to, if you're asking, are we proposing to have a variance to reduce the amount of landscaping? No, I don't think that's the approach that we're taking at all.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Jesse. Glad you had that available. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. What I wanted, I have a clarification question and then also just a a statement as if I put on my soccer mom hat or former soccer mom hat, I am a huge advocate for level playing fields as well as level playing fields. But having the fields be level so that we, our kids can compete on them. If they're not level, before we built a complex in Anchorage that my kids played on as they got older, they played on enough fields that had been designed so that they would drain. Well, they were also designed so that you knew, if you knew how to kick the ball right, you could get the ball in the goal, or you could send it into the next field because it was so sloped. So I guess I'm a huge advocate for making sure that we do get that grade right. What I wanted to ask, because I don't remember, is are these fields designed, I think I'm a huge advocate, advocate for the flexibility down the middle, too. Again, because the complex that we built in Anchorage has, I think, eight fields on it, and several of them are next to each other, so that you can either play six small field games or two, you know, Olympic competitive fields or a football game. And so it gives you the flexibility to do different things. And in our case, one of them was also a cross-country ski championship, the starting point for it. So what, what was the original intent on these fields? Are they supposed to be competitive soccer, competitive football, or all of the above?
Jesse, do you mind jumping in on that? I don't mind, but I think Jesse has the better answer than me.
Yeah, so these fields are intended to be multipurpose fields, as in when the city did the master planning session back in 2018, the lacrosse group was there, the football group, soccer, and Gig Harbor Little League. And, you know, they all weighed in on how these fields dimensions should be, just so that when they want to host games or tournaments, that these fields can be used for those functions. So, you know, we've made sure that the, the fields are 360 by 210, and that ensures that soccer can use it, lacrosse. The nice thing about it is we can put, the field will be lined, but you can also cone it or put temporary markings on it, so you can use it for lacrosse. So that, that was the intent, was to provide fields that could be used by multiple groups and not just one specific sport. And your, yeah, and your, your question or comment about, you know, programming those fields that initially, this was one field we were talking about, but because of the demand in the community, we added two. And with the two, we can, it provides that flexibility. I mean, you can run six toddler soccer games on two fields versus just three. So yeah, there's a lot of flexibility with the, the design that we presented.
Okay, good. Thank you, Jesse.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
I guess I had a couple of questions. One is, when you did the tree inventory, was there a value given to the timber?
Um, I, well, the, I don't know that yet. There, there is some level of value given to the timber. I don't know what that value is. And like I said, the, the way that they did the tree inventory from talking to Aaron Holst is they took a snapshot in a, in a section of the site and then said, copy, paste around there, and made an assumption, and didn't do a full tree survey of the entire site. Now, you will be seeing, that was, we weren't aware of that when we put together, we were asked for our original scope and fee from the consultant. We're going to be coming to the council on the 14th, and we're going to have in our contract money available for the consultant to do a full tree survey of both Phase 1A, Phase 1B, and probably the YMCA site itself, because we're looking at doing a binding site plan between the two properties. Well, between, there's actually three properties. And so we need to know how many trees are across every property that's going to be involved in the binding site plan. So Aaron and I have been talking about this, and so we'll know better later this spring, but I don't know that answer right now.
I would guess it would be, you know, $50,000 or more. The second question was, between the degree of drainage that would be ideal for the city would like to have had at one point versus what's allowable by the, the rules of the games? Is there, what's that delta? What is the difference between those things? Is any slope okay with the rules of the game?
Well, it depends on how far you want to go. I, I did look up, and maybe Jesse can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but I did look up the FIFA regulations. So that's the international, that's top professional level. There's no slope allowed on those.
Okay.
That said, Gig Harbor High School turf fields are sloped at 1%. So, and they play on those. I don't know if there's competitions on those, but they do play on those. And, and when we first met with the sports groups, they were unaware that there was slope to that field.
Almost unperceptible.
To me, yes, but to someone who's more advanced, probably not.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, Jeff. Couple of questions. The first one was the slope issue. That's Councilmember Rothenberg nailed that one good. Back to the thing on the trees and the replacement of the trees. Clearly, we're not going to be able to replace on that site all the trees that we're taking down, and I'm, I'm suspecting we're going to be taking some significantly large trees down. Would there be any plans to maybe plant trees as a, I'll call it mitigation, but it's not an official mitigation on other city-owned properties that might help alleviate? So if we take out 250 significant trees as part of the Phase 1A, 1B projects that we put back somewhere in the city, whatever we can on the site, but not too many, because it's not going to be suitable. And then plant another, whatever balance of trees somewhere else in the city. I think you'd get a lot more public support if they understood that that was going to happen, that we're just going to take all the trees out and we're putting little ornamental one-inch maples in.
Well, and I think that, I mean, you, you're alluding to, we're, we're going to do for the site at least, if not definitely more than what's required by land use requirements. But I think what you're asking is, if, if we take off, in a crazy example, if we take off 20 trees, and we only have to put back two of them to meet land use requirements, are we going to replace those 18 additional trees somewhere else in the city? We can. I think that the annual objective that we have in the budget for native vegetation plantings would be a good place to start. Enhance that if necessary, but I think that we can, and, and if council directs staff to do that, we'll work to make that happen.
Yeah. So understand about minimums, but minimums are just that minimum. We can always do better.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. And like I said, there's, there's opportunities to, to plant native, native vegetation, even on the, the sketch that Jesse showed earlier. They didn't show native vegetation being planted on those slopes. So maybe we work together to look at that and plant more of a native vegetation along those slopes. But we've got to get through, there is some engineering details we have to get through. That, what, what is the grade of that slope and everything else? So we're going to get to that through the engineering side of things. And then we'll be reporting back to council. Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thank you. So, well, I guess first I'll switch up my, my order of my comments, but I was thinking, you know, the same, same lines of the trees. Obviously, we're clearing a lot of land to do this. But when I look at, think of like the mitigation that we're doing, you know, purchasing the property off of Harborview Drive, I think that that is a, a huge, you know, purchase. We're into, we're looking at conservation, especially, you know, close to downtown Gig Harbor. We've got across the street from there as well as a high potential that we will acquire that as well. So I do see, you know, with even addition to that, the one on the east side of Harborview, there is a large portion of it that is open. You know, I, I think most of us have walked it, but it looks almost like a Christmas tree farm. There's been some trees planted, but there's an opportunity to plant some more. So I do see that as something that, you know, would be in good favor of our citizens of, you know, while we're putting this Sports Complex, it's in high demand. We are doing these other things that are, you know, I think very responsible and, and a good opportunity to do those. It's a good fit. Other comment that I had was just on the field itself. You know, I grew up playing soccer. I know very well the difference between a flat field and one with a pitch. It changes the game dramatically. So that is why there's reasons for that. There's other safety reasons, even having a, a pitch and some high school fields that I played on were terrible with this. The amount of speed that you get going towards the sideline, for example, versus going up towards the goal is much different. So then we talk about the barrier in between the fields and having this retaining wall and a step down. Oftentimes in these high-speed games, kids are going like at the line as fast as they can, trying to save the ball or get to it. And they're going off onto the sidelines, too. So having a barrier there, you're already worried about running into spectators, but then you've got a barrier. It's a, it's also an injury, I think, waiting to happen. I think of just spectators being out there, too. Having a, you know, completely or mostly flat surface and having a step down that's just in the middle, it's something that, you know, I think of like, you know, people that might miss that step in between. If that's, if that's all there is. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just for your reference, if, if we're talking a field at 210 feet wide, and if it's cross-sloped at 1%, that's 2.1 feet of drop from one side to the other. To the eye, you know, that, that, that you might not notice it for the general public, but it sounds like for those players that are at a level that are playing on these fields, they will notice that. That is very perceptible. Two feet. Now, we've talked in the past about half a percent. Half percent across the entire site is, is, you know, a couple of feet, if you're talking 500 feet from side to side. And so it's one of those things where, like I said, we've got 20 feet of drop. Is five feet going to make, or two feet going to make the difference? And, but you've added half a percent cross-slope? Something we got to talk about. And, but we'll, we'll get there. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, what I'm not doing is I'm not asking council to, to give us formal direction on the slope. We just want to make sure we're, we're talking about this. We'll be coming back to you and, and proceeding from there. Councilmember Henderson.
Jeff, does the decision on the slope, whatever it is, whether it's flat or 1% or half a percent, how will that impact the Phase 1B project? Because they're connected to each other.
Yeah, so that's the next step that I was going to talk about is, is how we're going to be proceeding. And the deep, the sign of the design details and the approach we're going to take as we launch into Phase 1B design. So hopefully I can answer your question, Councilmember Henderson, when I get in the next spot, but I'll answer or ask Councilmember Rothenberg his question first.
Director Langhelm, what is the substrate of the turf field? And do turf fields require different draining, drainage than not turf? And do they, you know, do they drain better? What's, what's the differences?
Well, it depends. There's, there's different ways to build synthetic turf fields, depending on how much money you want to spend. But my understanding, you, you can either put compacted crushed rock and have it be flat and do a sub-drain system, an underdrain system, or you can put concrete down there and do an underdrain system. I'm not sure. I know HBL has talked about it. I don't recall if they had a final decision made on whether it's going to be compacted crushed rock or concrete, but I know we've talked about both.
So it may drain better than a natural grass field anyway?
Oh, I'm, I'm almost certain it's going to drain better than a natural grass field. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I don't see any more questions at this point. I'm going to proceed then and hopefully answer your question, Councilmember Henderson. So the question is, and I'll just jump right into it now. So the question is, if we're, as we do proceed forward, we're going to be talking about in the engineering realm about grades with the city's consultant and HBL, the YMCA's consultant. But if we don't slope the fields, what, the Phase 1B project already had an approach to it, and I can bring that back up, but there was a very clear assumption made in the Phase 1B layout that there was going to be a consistent cross-slope of a little over 1% from falling from east to west. We're going to have to look at some things differently. And then next, actually, let me just bring up that sketch so you can kind of picture it in your head. So I'm going to bring up the Phase 1B site, site plan. So we have an existing crosswalk. We have an ADA ramp that we want to connect the site to, to that existing crosswalk. If there's a three-to-one, two-to-one slope here, this ramp can't go in, or it's going to have to be main or constructed a little differently. So we're going to have to look at this area over here on the east side and the connection point to Harbor Hill Drive. We're also going to have to look at the driveways coming in and out, because it drops significantly. If you were to because it drops significantly. If you were to cut this down here by, I don't know, eight, nine feet is a huge drop in elevation. And so we're going to have to look at that. We're going to have to look at all the slopes along here on the east side. And then you're going to go over to the west side and you're going to look at the slopes over here. This driveway coming on out of the parking lot and back into the YMCA's parking lot on the west side is going to, if you recall in that colored diagram that shows cuts and fills, is going to have a massive fill slope. Well, that means you cannot then connect to the Phase One C, which we haven't been talking about yet, but that's additional parking. When, if you remember the Bruce Dees concept that was part of the master plan process for the entire site, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, we ended up breaking Phase One into three sub-phases. One A, which is the turf field, One B, which is the community area, and then One C, which is those parking all along the west side of the current parking lot with the YMCA. So we're going to have to take a different approach to that. But those are the types of engineering details we're going to have to find out. And specifically to the connection point between One A and One B, there's going to be, of course, a fence along here to keep the balls in One A. But we may have to put small retaining walls. There might be a match point, an equal point for ADA access between Phase One B and One A inside the gate system here. But then as you fall away to the right, if our project One B comes up and One A is flat, then there's going to be a retaining wall need to be constructed. Same thing as you go to the west, to the left, as our project drops down. And if the One A project stays level, then you have to put a retaining wall, but the city's One B's construction project will be lower than One A. So it's going to increase costs to the city, probably if we decide to keep with our original assumption that we're going to have about a 1.1% cross slope across the site. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Henderson?
Yeah, it does. I guess at some point someone's got to make a decision, and if you're going to start pushing out an A and E contract to design this in March, early or mid-March, the design engineers are going to need to know whether we're dealing with flat or 1%. So will there be a decision made by that point?
Well, we probably won't have a decision made by that point. The intent would be to get an A and E contractor in here to start doing, to like finish the tree survey.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I mean, HBL's done all the initial topographic surveys, so they've given that to us already. So we're going to be able to use that and share that information. But we need to really start focusing on that binding site plan that we have to create. I mean, that's going to be a long discussion. And so, but I think the question on grading is something we're going to have to talk about, but I don't think it's something we have to talk about immediately. On like, if the, if the contract's adopted on March fourteenth, I don't think we have to talk about it starting March fifteenth. But we do have to start talking about it soon.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Woo.
What does this mean for the pickleball players and the pickleball court?
I don't think it'll have any impact on the pickleball players of the pickleball court. Well, let me tell you this, the impact it'll probably have is when you're playing pickleball over here, will you look at a sloped grade or you looked at a retaining wall? But as far as, is it going to reduce their area or shift the courts over? I don't see that happening.
Or change their play? Is it going to affect them at all?
I don't, I don't think it will. I mean, they were going to have fencing around there anyway, so I think that there'll still be the same space given to them, whether it's a fence or a retaining wall or whatever.
And it will be level?
Well, I don't know if the pickleball courts will be level. I think that they were originally slated to be at a cross slope of 1%. So those are hard surfaces. Those are likely going to be impervious surfaces. And so we would need to have stormwater runoff flow off of them, sheet flow off of them. And for example, when they, when you, I mean, I don't, I don't think we can make pickleball courts with pervious concrete. It's just too much open space in between the aggregate. So we've always anticipated the pickleball courts will have a slope. I don't think pickleball players are as concerned about a 1% cross slope or 2% cross slope that soccer players are because your pickleball court's only a few feet wide. You know, twenty-five or thirty, I don't know the actual dimensions of the court.
So has anyone asked those folks?
I don't think we have asked the the users of pickleball, the players of pickleball in Gig Harbor, we're relying on the pickleball designers that we have hired or that we will be hiring. They design these things.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to stop sharing my screen moment, probably come back to it. So as I said, we're going to have this design consultant before council, hopefully by the May fourteenth meeting. We hope to submit the land use permits and have a, you know, fifty, sixty percent conceptual design completed by fall of twenty-two, fall of twenty-twenty-two, so that we can submit those applications and start those through the process. And we need to be able to, the goal is to have it, a land use approval granted, permits in place, construction contract ready to advertise an award by early twenty-twenty-three because we want to be able to have construction completed by the end of twenty-twenty-three on Phase One B. So that's the timing for all of this. And as you probably recall, the lease itself with the city and the YMCA has the YMCA now submitting land use applications by June of twenty-twenty-three. We all understood during the discussions of the lease, but if you weren't here, a quick synopsis. There was, of course, the YMCA is looking for donations to build Phase One A. They're not taking it out of their operating budget. So they are going to be asking for donations for One A and COVID really impacted them. And so originally Phase One A was supposed to be constructed immediately before One B. We've now swapped that. One B's going to start and then One A's going to start after that. So they're going to be submitting their land use applications on or before June of twenty-twenty-three and have construction completed on their site on or before end of December twenty-twenty-four. So they're about a year behind us in terms of the city's project, One B. So that's the timeline that we're talking about. We, as I said, alluded to before, we are working together with HBL and the YMCA's engineers. Our consultant that we're getting a scope and fee from that we're going to present to council is already talking with everybody, seeing data from everybody. So it's helping to start the conversations. So, and I don't know, Jesse or Charlie, if you want to jump in and say anything about your schedule, but I was just saying what was in the lease. Okay. All right. So get into some more details and the approach on completing each phase here. So I want to make sure that we're all very aware that Phase One A is a regional facility. We've heard that before from the sports groups. We've heard it from the YMCA. It's intended to bring in people from city to bring in players from Gig Harbor Peninsula, Key Peninsula in the region. And Phase One B's focus, I'm sorry, and then the Phase One A focus, that is intended because that's the way the YMCA operates. They don't operate just to serve the city that they're located in. They're a regional group. And so we recognize that and accept that. And that's why we're working with them is to participate and bring us something that's a regional facility. But then the city has its Phase One B site. And that focus is more focused on city residents and city leading and and participating in the One B site. The pickleball players are mostly city residents. I mean, they can definitely be regional, but it's not intended to have regional competition or Western Washington competition facilities at the pickleball facility. The bocce ball, that's intended to bring families together that are city-focused families. And same thing with the play structures, which can also be for families attending the games that are at the Phase One A site. But then there's the performance canopy and the performance stage and the lawn in front of the canopy. All of that is intended to be something that's focused for the city's residents to come and enjoy. So though, that's how we're approaching this. We recognize that there's some concerns about who is the, who are we serving? And I think we're serving, looking at this, each partner in this that's developing this site is focused on developing it for the group that they're working with. So that's why we're continuing to move forward with this in the way that we are and working with Senator Randall to get state funding for some of these facilities. And then working together on trying to bring them together at as close to the same opening time as we can. Like I said, we've had to move Phase One B ahead of One A. And that was going to have additional impacts. Of course, when Phase One A was going to go first, YMCA was going to do clearing of their site and do a preliminary grading both on One for what they needed, but then do some preliminary grading on One B. Well, now that One B's going, the city is going to have to be the ones to clear the site for One B, and they'll have to clear some of One A and do some preliminary grading on One A. And also, as noted in the lease, if One B's going to be going first, the city's going to have to build that restroom facility. And so the building itself, design and construction is included in the scope and fee that you'll be seeing for the city's design consultant. And the lease addresses that. If we build it, then there's things that happen. But it is going to change the approach then from what was originally discussed a few years ago. But most of it, we think, if not all of it, has been captured in the lease. Uh, Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, Jeff. Can you show us again where the restroom is? I missed that. So it looks like the city will be building the restroom first.
Yeah, it's actually
One B.
Yeah, the restroom and concessions is in Phase One B. The way it was originally scoped is that when One A, whoever came in first would bring people in. And the intent was, we need to set, we need a restroom facility for whoever's there. And so that's where we went back and forth. And when One A was going first, YMCA was going to build it. Now One B's going first, well, the city needs to build it. Now, concessions are still not operated by, is going to be operated by the city. It's still, but the building will be constructed.
Okay, so it's clear that the restrooms then will be serving not only Phase One B activities, but Phase One A YMCA activities as well.
Yes, and that's the way it had been all along. Those restrooms are intended to serve both facilities.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Woo.
Yes. Um, I am the only council member left from two thousand and eighteen when this was presented to the council at that time. And I recognize that Phase One A is going to be built, the sports complex. But I need to make a statement in that when this was sold to the council in two thousand and eighteen and when this vote happened, it was never mentioned that it was going to be a regional complex. This was sold as a complex for our Gig Harbor kids and their need for practice fields and playing fields. And it somehow became a regional complex after that. And I think that needs to be on record because the council in two thousand and eighteen never voted for a regional complex. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson, do you have another question? Uh, let's look. Okay. Let's see here. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen. So we, you will see as part of the contract for Phase One B, a little more work, a little more effort on the consultant's part than what was originally anticipated. So we can explain that when we, in the detail, if we need to, when we get to the meeting that it's presented. But just, I wanted to make sure you were prepared for that and as we've outlined here. The, I think we talked about the vegetation and landscaping. It's going to be prepared. The trees and the green spaces around the site are going to exceed the minimum standards. We want to be able to provide something, and we think we can, that exceeds those minimum standards, not just meeting the minimum standards. But also another topic, more to come as we proceed. Councilmember Henderson.
Jeff, when you come up with the A and E contract, will you be able to put in some requirements in there that they are a little more environmentally friendly with things like their parking area, you know, helping us with our stormwater stuff, maybe by putting in grasscrete rather than our traditional asphalt? Or any other things that might be unique that we could be proud of as a city that says, yes, we are. We are looking at climate change. We're looking at this stormwater issues. I think this is the time to actually look into stuff like that versus coming when the project's already almost done and saying, well, why didn't we do it?
Sure. Well, I'll say that the stormwater manual requires us to look at low-impact development first. If it's not feasible, then we can put in impervious surfaces and use, I don't want to say traditional, but the type of stormwater facilities that were popular previously, the past few decades. And so if you're looking to actually, if there's desire to have the city's consultant provide options for doing above and beyond what's required in the manual, we can do that. It's going to cost us a little more money to have the design completed and, but we could, it's a minimal amount more money just to complete the design and possibly to put it in as an additive. And I'll give you an example. Let's use the grasscrete you mentioned. There's, we could put in for Phase One B parking lot, you could put in, let's put in, I think there's thirty, let me see if that actually has a number on it. No, it doesn't actually have a number. I think there's thirty-some on parking stalls in the, in the One B site plan. You could say that you want thirty of them to be grasscrete as an additive bid item. And then when they're bid, council at the time when they award the contract could say, oh, well, that it's going to cost us ten thousand dollars more to put grasscrete in than just regular pavement, go for it or not. That's not something we want to pay additional for. So we could have that integrated into the scope. And if there's interest, I'll talk with Aaron and make sure that that's noted in the scope is to go above and beyond with low-impact development beyond what's in the stormwater manual currently.
I would like that just because it tends to give us some options that we didn't think about. And again, always doing the minimum, I understand that as an engineer. But again, I, I would like to make this project something we can be proud of and say, well, we have the minimum, but we're going above the minimum.
Okay.
At least that's my opinion.
Okay, Councilmember Henderson.
I would like to second that thought of Councilmember Henderson. I do think this is going to be something that we can be proud of. And it's nice, the new elementary schools are LEED certified, and the more we can do and say, look what we're doing to build for the future. I think that's great. But I also wanted to mention one other thing. I don't know if this is the right time, and I don't know if there's any support, so I'm just going to throw it out there, but we're getting kind of far along in the One B design. So I know I've discussed this with Director Langham, and I've mentioned it to Mayor Markley, so you probably know it's coming. But I was wondering if part, part of the event lawn could have an alternative surface? Because I know we've included the event lawn in the RCO grant, so it has to be there. Could it have an alternative surface material? And could that be sand that we could call like the Gig Harbor Beach or something? And that portion could be a flexible-use space with sand volleyball, beach soccer, you could still throw the frisbee and picnic on it. We can move the nets in and out as needed. If we've got concerts, they can come out and people can put their beach chairs and blankets on it. It was just a thought to, to give a nod to our beach volleyball folks that were so involved. And for those of you who are not on the Parks Commission or City Council at the time, who are included on all four of the plans for this and then got taken out at the end. So that's my idea, and it's the last time I'll bring it up to you guys in case anybody's interested.
Well, I'll say this, I don't have a formal response from RCO on that question in particular. I do know that they would probably be, remain flexible to being able to continue to utilize the site use for its intended purpose. If you're adding an amenity, I'm sure they're going to be all for it, but we can't say, well, we're going to take away something to add something different. So we would have to verify that with RCO, but they did award us five hundred thousand dollars based on that concept we just saw.
Yeah, and I think that would be the intent. It could still be used for event space, but it could also be have a flexible use for some of these other fun, fun and unique things.
So I guess I'll just ask the council, is there need to be careful about how I ask this, but any, is there opposition to looking at that as an alternative? Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, she did, Councilmember Dentson didn't mention how big that would be, how big a space. Uh, how big a space I I can tell you that. Uh, you know, a sand pit. Requires a whole lot more grooming, whole lot more maintenance than grass. Uh, you you got special drainage issues. You have to groom it. Uh, it becomes a cat box. It's more difficult to uh maintain. I'm not saying I'm pro or con. Uh, I'm just saying that uh, not only might there be an initial cost, but the upkeep is is greater.
And there's.
And and what and? Is it truly going to benefit the majority? Uh, and not just a few.
Well, I'll just add on to that. Uh, one of the maintenance issues is that the sand gets drug, whether intentionally or unintentionally into the natural turf. Um, usually that's that sand's pretty free draining and it doesn't negatively impact. It's not creating a mud pit. But uh, it definitely is a maintenance issue, both to keep it. To refill it into the sand pit area and to get it out of the grass. Uh, Councilmember Wook.
I have concerns with that project of making it a sand pit. I don't know that I. I I would have to know a lot more about it before I would support it. Uh, if folks are going to be there for an event and maybe to watch um. Some music or other events. I don't know how that works with the sand pit. Um, so I I I would need to know a lot more about it before I could support it.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Storset.
Yes, thank you. Um. Well, Robin, I love your uh energy towards this and I, you know, I think there potentially is some ideas for an alternative surface. I don't know what it is. I have to say on the sand side. Um, you know, I think about ADA and accessibility for folks of. Coming out to these things and would be very limited, I think, in some ways. And uh, as a parent, I think of my youngsters playing in the sand. I like to res. I like to reserve that for the beach um, where it's uh expected that you'll get sand in your. Your lunch or your face. So um, I don't know, I'm open to other ideas that I'm I'm curious to see. Uh, Jeff, what you might come back with or Matthew, if you have any experience in this area too for alternatives. Um. I think it's it's something to think about. It's a it's a good space for an opportunity like that. Just don't know what it looks like yet. Thanks.
Councilmember Henderson.
Uh, one thought is rather than converting an entire event space to that, perhaps we find a small area where we could put in one or two. In the area.
Well, I my understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Denson, that your intent was to, and I'm bringing back up the phase one B site plan. Was to take a portion of the event lawn.
Correct. And I don't know how big that would be. That's a great question, but it would just be a portion that, you know, people would know is as the beach and it could be. It could still be for, you know, throwing the throwing the frisbee around and soccer and all sorts of stuff, but it would also accommodate some of the sand volleyball that we heard. A lot from during during this whole discussion several years ago. And I'm fine if people aren't supportive, but I just wanted to get it out there. While while we still had time to consider it.
Right. And just for your reference, I don't know the exact dimensions of the sand volleyball court, but it it is a little bit larger than a pickleball court. So if you want to. Do your finger scale on this. On your screen, you can do that. Uh, Councilmember Lichten.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to echo the sentiments that um, that Councilmember Storset brought up. Um, Robin, of course, you know, I also love you and uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Denson. And um, appreciate your energy, but I have concerns about accessibility. Um, as a healthcare provider and someone who works with disabled kids. Um, the beach area, especially if it's a large area. I mean, it sounds so fun. But um, I have accessibility concerns for sure. So thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Community Development Director Knutson.
Thank you. Um, Jeff, I. As putting my my previous parks manager hat on, I I just wanted to state from the process and when the sand volleyball courts were originally. Uh, eliminated from the design, one of the major considerations was the significant investment the city would be making along with the Y in the. Uh, turf fields and how expensive those are to replace. And there was concern from the landscape experts that sand getting into the. Courts, you know, if kids are carrying it and throwing it, uh, then it could degrade the. Uh, many hundreds of thousands dollars of turf. That will be there. That was one of the considerations.
Thank you, Ms. Knutson. I just want to also remind uh, council that uh, the. Two to five and the five to twelve play area. Where's my cursor? Um, there that is here in the center of phase one B is turf. It is not natural grass. Uh, Councilmember Rodenber.
Yeah, gee, I you. You got me. Oh, I I know what it was. Uh. There is going to be a significant nod to the sand volleyball. Players when the visioning happens at Crescent Creek Park. I understand. Uh, I know it's far off, but I understand that. The intent is to enhance those volleyball courts up there. And uh, I I think that's a distinct and different purpose than an event lawn.
Yeah, that I can say that, yes, the the. Initial concept from a couple of years ago was to uh, promote additional sand volleyball courts, at least two, if not more. But you're right, that's something that is going to have to happen through the visioning process uh. That Matt is working on. Matt, I don't know if you want to say anything to that.
Oh, thanks, Jeff, for the opportunity. Um, I would uh echo counsel uh, because they have the leadership on this and I would say that an event lawn is a special. Feature to have, and I don't want to lose a special feature. The idea that it could be multi-purpose is attractive. And the idea that people might be able to do some volleyball tournaments out there, I think is something that we could look at doing. Um, but I don't know that you'd have to change the surface for that. I've seen volleyball on different kinds of surfaces and informal play. Sounds like something to accommodate here versus more formal volleyball at Crescent Creek is already in place and a great destination feature for those who are really looking for that. So I guess what I'm getting at is, yes, be purposeful with your design and what you want. And don't let one of, don't let a function get compromised. And I'm afraid sand would compromise an event lawn, although. It could be done in a very small area, but I don't think that's really what we're hearing.
Councilmember Henderson.
Uh, thanks, Jeff. For clarity, uh, when you say the um. Playground area is going to have turf, do you mean artificial turf or native turf?
Sorry, synthetic turf. Yes, artificial turf.
I'm an old guy, so for me turf was grain grass. And so everything else has always been artificial turf or artificial grass. So.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. All right. Thank thanks, Matt. Matt, I I don't know. I I didn't give you much opportunity to jump in, but I I do appreciate you put any any. Am I missing anything? I mean, we've talked about this on and off for a while. Okay. All right, well, um, oh. Did you want to say something, Matt?
Uh, if 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 asked to speak more on this, um, just as a newcomer, I will just put it out there that this is a very exciting and incredible. Uh, project to offer this many opportunities to the community, uh, such diverse activities. And the combination of working with the Y, I'm not trying to cheerlead something, but I'm accustomed to saying, how in the world could we ever afford turfed lit fields? And I think the combination here of getting so many community assets and something that. May have a regional aspect to it, but it is definitely serving our local community is a great big win. So I'm going to be the cheer. I'm going to be a cheerleader at the moment and tell you that. I'm not accustomed to hearing that we can have lit turf fields um, by private fundraising.
Excellent. Great. All right, so Charlie, did you want to say anything?
No, I'm I'm equally excited, Matt. Um, I think it's a great opportunity. We've worked carefully with the groups that are within Gig Harbor, all the sports groups. I will say it's the most complex field project I've been around. It's complex, just even listening to today's conversation. There's a lot of. Facets to this and I've learned more than I ever dreamed I would have learned. But it's good.
And well, thank you for your sticking with us throughout all of this detailed discussion. Um. I'm going to wrap it up at this point. Um, I just want to just provide again a quick summary of what what the next steps are. Uh, you again, we're going to have a design call consultant contract, professional services contract for council, hopefully by March fourteenth. If not, then by March twenty eighth, uh, we'll kick off design immediately thereafter and then um. Continue to check in with council on the way. It could be at our uh. Uh, study session for capital improvement project schedule updates and just give updates as we go or specific staff reports. Uh, we are going to be getting through design in two thousand and twenty-two and construction in two thousand and twenty-three and then immediately. Uh, YMCA and HBO will be following us with the design permitting and then construction with phase one A. So. Uh, it's getting the momentum that has been there all along and now we'll see it in reality. Uh, Councilmember Henderson.
Um, do you think there's going to be some renderings that are going to be available as they go along through the design phases? I mean, right, right now we have a. A nice rendering, but the actual design is going to be significantly. More complex, so. It would be nice for everybody to see some renderings as we go along.
We we'll put it into our contract to have at least one set of renderings as we get into probably like a sixty percent design. Um. But uh, I guess that's up to the YMCA if they want to work with HBO to have a rendering of the uh, phase one A site.
Oh, I was thinking more of our phase one one B since that's a city park, city, city funded, everything else.
Yes. Yeah, we'll have at least one rendering that will add to what you've already seen.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, that's all I had. I appreciate your time uh, and the questions and the direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much and and to Matt as well. And again, to Charlie and Jesse, thank you so much for being here with us this afternoon. And um. Have a wonderful evening, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you soon. Um, so our next item is our two thousand and twenty-two long range planning work plan program. And this will be Katrina Knutson, our community development director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. Uh, Carl DeCimas, principal planner will also is also in attendance today and he has free reign to interrupt me and correct me if I. Uh, mess anything up or he has any additional information to add. We're excited to be here today to present the long range planning work program for two thousand and twenty-two. We hope that this is an iterative process with council, have an open dialogue about what's been proposed in front of you today. This is new. This is not something that has been um, put forward in this way to council before. So we're really hoping to have um. Create a good understanding about where we are in terms of projects and where we see things being able to get done. And then create that foundation so that as we work work through the work program, council feels on board, feels that they have the information they need. We're being able to let you know any delays or advancements, et cetera. Um. Also, part of the work program in solidifying that is to show. The capacity within the planning division for long range work. This will become important as we move through the year. Things may come up that uh, council would like to work on. Last year, uh. Short-term rentals, for instance, came up and that's taken a significant amount of staff time to work on. So by having a work program that is worked on. With the council, uh, kind of bringing you along the process with us. If some things like that were to come up later this year, we would be able to then look back at the work program and say, okay. If we're adding. X project in, what are we able to? What are we going to remove and move to a priority to two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-four? And what that will allow us to do is not over promise and under deliver. Staff really wants to be able to work on projects, do them well, make the community proud. And so we're hoping that this is a good first step in being able to. Attain that. A quick. Um. Disclaimer that this is only the long range functions of the department. This does not include any of the permitting functions uh, or other regulatory functions that the department and in particular the planning division provides. Um. And so that is not subject to this conversation, any of the permits that we review. It's not the the point of today's meeting. Additionally, some other considerations are, I think I put this in my last update to council, but we did, we're able to bring onboard one senior planner who started on Valentine's Day. Roxy Robles and she's doing wonderful. She's working on our DNR application for urban forestry right now and she's doing a really great job. Uh, Robin Bolster Grant, it will be our second senior planner and she starts on March seventh. And I say that both with great excitement and also with a caution that it does take a while to bring people up to speed. Uh, have them learn our processes, you know, uh, where everything is, get to know their coworkers. So although they are senior planner level and we do expect them to come up to speed relatively quickly, it's not as if we have them here right now. They're already trained up and ready to hit the ground. So those are some additional considerations that were put into our recommendations for you that were in the packet. Additionally, we have one total FTE that is uh slated within the planning division for long range planning work currently. How that has been done in the past is uh, one FTE, one person took all of that work themselves and brought that forward. Looking uh pivoting a little bit um, and listening to staff and what they would value in terms of career advancement. What we've done with the two senior planners is effectively split them. So they'll be both working on long range and current planning. And that not only will provide efficiencies for, let's say, a long range planner who's drafting code, we want them to be able to know how that affects the permits that they're reviewing so that they have that understanding. Um, but it also helps kind of uh, in the reverse, if we have a a large influx of long range work that needs to get done and we're. Low on permits, then we can shift staff around and it allows us to be more nimble to um. Get more of the work done. And so that's a change that we've made at the end of last year with. Uh, the mayor and Tony's blessing and and staff is very supportive of that as well from a professional development perspective. Planners don't typically want to be pigeonholed into one or the other. They'd like to be able to work on long range and current planning. So we're not only. Helping the city, but we're also helping to build up the staff that we're acquiring. So. That being said, you should have received uh, something like this in your packet that outlined. The projects that are in the that are outlined for the work program this year. And those are a mix of items that were in the budget. Uh, items that uh, maybe we we are required to get done by state law, for instance, the housing plan. And then. Items that are have been feedback from council, especially in your uh, the goals that were adopted from the council retreat. And so those have all been compiled on here. You'll note that there are several that are underway and therefore we've placed them at a high priority. And at the end of the list, there's also some ongoing support and we won't really be talking about any of those today because they're. Things that maybe take an hour here or there um, every week, such as the um, shape support. The uh, GMCC support, PSRC and legislative monitoring, those things are as needed. We're going to do them regardless of what else is put on the work program. So that won't be the focus of today. Um. So with that being said. I kind of wanted to, I want to ask the council. Would you like us to run through each of the work programs or would you like to? I've I've taken the liberty of breaking out. Separate from this, both the projects in kind of a linear fashion for kind of how long they're going to take and then also a list of. Priority level. And so if I can maybe show you that first, but I see Councilmember Henderson has his hand up.
Thank you, Katrina. Um, first of all, before we get into the nitty gritty of this, uh. I would like to really thank you and Carl for coming up with a list like this. And I know doing this takes a lot of time. Um, but it certainly helps us make informed decisions. So I I just want to say how much I appreciate you. You're thinking about this seriously versus just throwing out a mess of stuff and saying, well, here we don't, we don't know. So. Clearly, a great deal of thought has been put into this. Thank you very much. Um, I I guess if I had anything, I'd say if we just go through each one. One, one by one, that's at least my opinion. And then we can talk about where that is the level of effort, how we might get it done, priority.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, you can just run through each of them and then I can show you the linear. Graph as well as the prioritization graph. Councilmember Rodenber.
Yeah, I uh, the one thing I would have liked to have seen on here and I suggest that we. Say at first about each line item and that is what is what is mandated to us, what is required? Because when I was looking at the housing needs and action plan. I'm thinking, why is that really high? But now I understand from you what you just said, that that is something that has to be done. It's mandated to be done. So if that would have. Because I spent some time looking. So if that would have, cause I spent some time looking at these and making my own mind. But I didn't have that one bit of data, what is required, what is mandated, what do we have to do? So if we cover that first off as we go to the line items, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Great. That's a great point. I'm sorry that we didn't have that on there. We will include it in the future when this comes forward again. I will bring up this document on the screen and speak to them. So the urban growth area analysis that is currently underway coming to you on the tenth of March and the seventeenth of March for work session. Again, that's a strategic guiding document. This is not a requirement from the state or federal government. This is something that the, the city is undertaking uh because of its usefulness, especially leading up into our comprehensive plan update in twenty twenty, let's do in twenty twenty four. Um, this document will break down our urban growth area into pieces and give you all of the financial information in terms of taxes collected, uh utility expenditures that would be required for streets, wastewater, water, et cetera, um projected tax revenue. And then also goes down into uh breaking down how many city staff that were, would be required to be added on. If, let's say, we took on Canterwood, which I'm not suggesting, but if we did, how many, you know, police officers would that require? How many additional maintenance would that take? So that's what this report will look like. And that will be submitted out for your review prior to the work session next week. Uh transitional housing, this is the ordinance that we have interim regulations on. This is required by the state and that was based on um a bill twelve twenty that was adopted last year. Where we are in the process right now, the planning commission just had a public hearing last week and took testimony there. It will be coming back for their recommendation at their meeting next week. And then it will be on to the council for a public hearing and adoption. The third item, short term rental regulations. You recall this is, we have a current six year, six year, six month moratorium underway for short term rentals. This is not a requirement by the state uh or any other entity. This was undertaken by the city. And this is to address our inadequacy in our code for short term rentals. That is also underway. If you haven't already, I would suggest going to the planning commission's agendas. Uh Carl and his team did a really bang up job with putting together public comments in a very easily understandable manner and a great staff memo that goes over where we are. That the planning commission will be evaluating that next week and then we'll be moving forward to drafting code for that. Growth targets, those are required by both PSRC and the state. It is low because it is, it, we say complete, it's nearly complete. Uh Carl's doing some finishing work with the county to ensure that the uh population and employment targets are uh properly within uh the county's countywide planning policies. But so there's minimal work that's left required on that. Yes, council member.
Uh, yes, this information on the growth target numbers, um that will be in the comp plan.
Yes, the growth targets are an implementing factor for the upcoming comprehensive plan. We will need to properly um look at zoning within the city and then also coordinate with the county on UGA zoning and sizing. Um, so yes, we will be, it's an integral part of the comprehensive plan update.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next four items are requests for initiation that will be coming to council uh at your next meeting for comprehensive plan updates this year. Uh, they are all city recommended changes to the comprehensive plan. The pros element, that is a requirement to be put into the comprehensive plan with the new pros plan that's been adopted. The capital facilities amendment, the first one on the next page, that is not a requirement by the state. However, uh public works director Jeff Langholm and I have talked about uh the need for consistency between the capital facilities element and the comprehensive plan and public work standards regarding what specifically what constitutes a technical amendment. So something that could be made without going through the council process. And then what, for instance, under the wastewater portion, um what is above a technical amendment that would require a comprehensive plan amendment. The two plans are currently inconsistent and so this would be essentially correcting that. Yes, council member.
Can you explain a little bit more about a technical amendment?
Um, yes, so the growth management act does not allow for technical amendments. And by technical amendments, um what we think of is wording changes. Um, uh mapping changes, for instance, if the city were to annex a part of the UGA, a technical amendment would be going into those plans and amending the map to show that those are now in our sewer boundary. Um, what is not a technical amendment is a project is in one sewer basin. And because of the cost associated with needing to flow to the basin that it's in, they want to go to a different sewer basin because it would be cheaper for them. That would not constitute a technical amendment because that would cause a shift in um both uh capacity and uh money. And so that would necessitate a comprehensive plan amendment for consistency.
And could that be done without it being in the comp plan?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, council member Henderson.
Uh, thanks. Um, as we go through these other ones that are not necessarily mandated, can you give us a, a kind of a a rough idea on the level of effort for planning to accomplish that, any one of these tasks? I mean.
Yes, I, I would like to reserve that until the linear chart that I have after going through these, if that's acceptable.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see. Uh, another conference plan amendment that's going to be requested is a uh one pertaining to climate change. That was one of the council's top five priorities from the retreat. And so this has been added in for a comp plan amendment. The climate change language was removed from the comprehensive plan, I believe in twenty eighteen. And so this would be adding that language or adding language into the comprehensive plan regarding climate change. Uh, I will say again, right now, we don't know what that is and we would anticipate that going through a public process and through the planning commission, obviously prior to coming to council. Yes, council member Rodenberg.
Yeah, this, that's one that I had uh most questions about, uh not problems with, but the most questions about. And when we talked about just adding the language back, uh I, I know you're probably gonna get this when you get to your linear uh timeline. But you know, to me, adding that language back means cut and paste and it takes two hours. Uh, but now you're talking about uh public input, public comment and I think and making that more than uh than it used to be. So I, I anticipate listening carefully when you get to your timeline about how much time that would take. Uh, because I think time spent on that, uh in lieu of a couple others that we're gonna get to uh ahead of others, uh isn't quite as important if it's more than cut and paste.
You, you bring up a really good point and that's part of what comments like that are why I think this meeting is so important, I should say. Because if we are just copying and pasting what was removed previously, that is very easy and you're correct. However, if, if it's more of the intent of council that we're going to be adding in policies to uh the land use chapter, the uh environmental chapter to our comprehensive plan chapter or our capital facilities chapters, maybe in terms of um EV charging stations, et cetera, that's when it can get more in depth. And so I don't know if there's direction now, definitely the inappropriate time to talk about that would be at the uh hearing on Monday night, give direction to, to staff on kind of what the level of effort you would like to see. Um, there were no policies prior or goals regarding climate change. It was, climate change was discussed in more of the narrative of the comp plan prior. So in terms of goals and policies, we would be creating new goals and policies.
Okay, so that tells me it's, it is much more time consuming than cut and paste. And that maybe some of these other things should take higher priority, in my opinion. I'll talk about that when we get to them.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, the fourth one is Bree Ellis, um who's the stormwater technician. She's been working with Carl and the city engineer on um a stormwater management action plan. And that is to go into our stormwater management manual and come up with an action plan to create or to achieve the goals that are set out within that. And staff has done a lot of work on that and will be bringing that forward for consideration for addition into the comprehensive plan. Um, let's see. The twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update, that effort is a required effort by the state. It is due by June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. Currently, the budget has money to start a public outreach process for the comprehensive plan starting um in June of this year. And so that's why this is a medium priority. Obviously, the comp plan update is a very high priority for the city in the, in the next two years. However, right now with the other priorities that we have, we thought that this could take a, a medium a medium status on this list, but as we move through the year, it will inch its way up to uh high priority. Yes, council member.
Yes, so I have some concern about having this as a medium priority. It would seem to be more of a high priority because if we have to set policies, don't we need to have them mentioned in the comp plan before we can actually make ordinances and rules and regulations? Or can we have interim rules and regulations before it's noticed in the comp plan?
Yeah, that's a good question. So any of the amendments, the ones that I mentioned above this that are on the docket right now, they would take effect at the end of twenty twenty two, whatever council passes. And those would be in effect prior to this comprehensive plan update. The, the comprehensive plan update is a requirement by the state to look at any uh regulations uh in the WAC or RTW that have been modified since the adoption of the last plan. Also to re-um look at our growth and so that's when our growth targets will come in. We'll need to look at land use and zoning, both in the city and the UGA. So they're really two separate efforts. The, the four docketed items, they could create goals and policies that would go into the comp plan now. And then they would then be, could be reevaluated in, in uh, in the twenty four, twenty four update. Hopefully, they wouldn't have to be too much because we wanna get them as close to what council um the vision is as possible. But they would not be duplicative efforts.
Okay, so for example, uh, uh, Vision twenty fifty obviously includes climate issues that the city, I believe, has to incorporate. And if we wanted to have some policies about that before the comprehensive plan, that is a doable.
That is, and that's one of the things that's, the docketed item would, would take care of. I will note that because climate change um is added to growth management and now as a requirement of Vision twenty fifty, if we were not to undertake the climate change initiative this year through the comp plan amendment, we would be required to do so as part of twenty twenty four. So there is the option, council, I'm just throwing this out here, not, I know it's a priority for you, so it's probably not what you're gonna wanna do. But you could bump that work into the twenty twenty four update and we would still be consistent. Again, I know that I don't think there would be support for doing that, but it could be done that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The housing needs and action plan, uh this was a requirement that was added to state law that required cities to analyze their housing needs by age, special need and income. This plan would, what we would plan to do would be hire a consultant to do the majority of the work for us and look at potential policy and code amendments around housing attainability and affordability. Um, this would also be loosely linked to our uh involvement with shape and ensure compatibility region wide. I know that there's been a strong sense from um some planning commissioners, some community and some council members that, you know, Gig Harbor is a smaller city, we can only do so much, but you know, we could maybe make a bigger impact region wide. And I definitely agree that shape is great and will make a great, a great difference by working with our Pierce County partners. This, however, is the state's requirement for us to look at our city and what, what we're, what we need in order to meet housing uh needs in our community. Yes, Roger, or council member Henderson, sorry.
Okay, I'll, I will answer it almost anything. On the housing needs and action plan, need to point out that it's also what we promised Representative Caldwell in our letter back to them about the ADWC and the, and the missing middle housing that we said we were gonna be doing this. Um, I think that's why I'm happy to see this as a high priority. Because if the city says, we don't like the state telling us what to do, let us figure it out. Then by golly, by gosh, I wanna see you start figuring stuff out. So thank you for putting that there.
Thank you. Let's see, I'm moving right along, housing preservation board creation. Um, I mentioned this maybe early last year, there there's some community sentiment and sentiment from our uh design review board and especially our certified local government historic officials on that board that they would like to see and staff would support this, that uh splitting up of the design review board from uh, I'm not saying this very well, I'm gonna start over. Currently, our design review board has five members that have either requirements to be an architect, an engineer, designer, et cetera. And then there's two members that were added to the design review board when the city became a certified local government for historic preservation. And the reason those members were added to the design review board was to hear anything that would need a sort of um certificate of appropriateness for historic property. The, the historic members on that member, on that board, however, feel that the city should be doing more or have a separate board looking at historic preservation. Uh, and especially in relation to um our uh fishing village, uh maritime history, preservation of uh homes, considering if there's anything else in our city that should be on the historic register. Uh, things right now that don't receive a lot of attention because the DRB is consistently looking at private development, design and public design projects. Um, we've talked with the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. They would actually prefer for this to be, the, these members to be split off the DRB into their own. Um, into their own board to conduct those functions. We would like to at least consider that with council to see what that would be, how much staff time that would take. And you know, I think it would create efficiencies on the design review board as well. Uh, not having members that don't necessarily have the design background sitting in meetings, meeting after meeting, not, not necessarily feeling that they're contributing and wishing that they could contribute in a more, a, a different manner regarding historic preservation. Um, council member Henderson.
Oh, was it placed as a low priority simply because of resourcing issues? Or you, do you, did the, you and staff felt like it, is it particularly needed?
We, we believe it is needed. However, on the hierarchy of what is required and what is a current council priority, um, it, it rang to low. However, I, I did talk with um the interim city administrator yesterday about how creating this historic preservation board could further the council's goal of the maritime character and keeping that intact. And so, you know, we may need to consider, it's something to consider, maybe bumping up as time allows.
Okay, thank you.
It pains me to say the design manual update is a medium because we really do believe that this is necessary, not only in terms of preservation of properties, preservation of our community, but also one of the council's goals is economic development and in, ensuring that we have businesses that are coming to the city. The design manual was really created uh for kind of this downtown view basin and some of the requirements for properties within the city. When they're applied to larger scale industrial projects, for instance, like Latitude forty seven or uh other areas, they can be cumbersome for um, for development. And so part of this design manual update is not only how are we going to continue to preserve the view basin and what is our character, but also within areas of the city that are zoned for industrial or commercial purposes. Are there additional allowances or um a lesser stringent design? That was duplicative, but a less stringent design that can be applied to those projects so that we can Duplicative, but a less stringent design that can be applied to those projects so that we can kind of further embolster the economic development of the city. And right now, when staff's reviewing those projects, it's a it's a little bit frustrating because it does, they don't directly apply, however, the code says that they do, and so we've been, we've been going forward as such, but I do think that's one thing that we could do that would really, not only again, help out the view basin, make some corrections of things that we're continually seeing that's not clear and potentially could make, you know, help preserve the character, but also how can we amend the manual to allow for commercial industrial development to occur, not subject to a kind of a Millville standard? Councilmember Barber?
Thank you. You're getting into the the pages of the document that I have some concerns about, and I think that these, I'm hoping this will become more apparent when you get to the linear portion of the discussion, but I'm wondering if things like the design manual, parking requirements, and also you addressed it a li- a little bit, but the comp plan update almost seem like there are things that you know that you need to do, but you don't have this cap staff capacity to do. And I completely appreciate that and understand that. But I'm wondering if you can address for us at some point during today's discussion what it might take for you guys to be able to do, for your department to be able to do a design manual update and the parking requirement work that needs to happen this year so that we can help you get those projects done, because they seem really important.
Thank you, Councilmember. I I think I would like to address that on the on the linear chart as well, but I I really appreciate that comment. Councilmember Roenber?
Yes, you are certainly the one that knows more about staff availability and what they can work on or not, but I think that as far as architectural design goes and the design manual, I I don't know if I heard you correctly, but I thought you implied that that couldn't be applied to large commercial structures, and I think it's important that we try very hard to do that. Since the city is growing, I I think it's great, I think it would be good if we had the same flavor. You know, Pacific Northwest flavor, I I think the multi-car building is a perfect example of that. A a large structure that is Northwestern flavor, whereas if you go to Gig Harbor North, there's there's nothing like that up there, and I think the more cohesive design we could have throughout the city would just go to continue to bring us all closer together and all parts of the city would have similar architectural design. Not identical, but similar architectural design. So I'm in favor of if you found it possible with your staff to pay consideration, more consideration to this.
Excellent. That's a great conversation starter. I think we could talk about what Councilmember Rothenberg just said for a very long time about, you know, design, you know, there's some not to get off track too far, but there's just, there's some folks that think that maybe we split the design manual into nodes. You know, a Gig Harbor North, a view basin, and you know, a west side, and then there's some that you know, want the the manual to be updated to kind of have the same flavor as Councilmember Rothenberg was saying all over the city so that you know you're in Gig Harbor, you know, no matter where you are. And so those are really the discussions that we want to have, so that we're implementing the design that the policymakers want to see implemented in development. I mean, that's really what this is about. With the design manual update, we're super lucky to have David Boyer on our team as the assistant building official fire marshal, and he has an architect degree, architecture degree. And what we do see when this program goes forward is having this be an interdisciplinary team between not only planning, but also having David involved with his architecture background and then someone from Public Works who can really speak to, you know, design of, you know, curbs and, you know, how kind of the public arena meets the private arena and how we can make those things a little bit more cohesive. So that's really an exciting project.
Yeah, I was going to say to Katrina, just to piggyback on that a little bit, that the another part of the purpose of that design manual update is just is is the the whole holistic view of the of the manual between all of our disciplines here at the city, because we found a lot of inconsistencies. When this was, either when this was created or just through changes that have taken place over time in the Public Works Manual and and so forth, so this this would, this effort would really clean a lot of that up and take a lot of the frustration out of the implementation of the of the design manual and also maybe not have to bring some items to DRB, to the designer review board that wouldn't otherwise really need to go to them.
Thank you, Carl. You know, and that, I know we're not speaking to kind of the permit side of the house, but this design manual update, cleaning that up, it will provide efficiencies and permit time review. Because there'll be less need for administrative interpretations on various items, so that's a win-win. Thanks, Carl. Urban Forestry Program, that was one of council's high priorities that we've heard. It's also something that we've been hearing from the community, which I'm sure you are hearing from your constituents as well. We put this as a high priority, noting that we're in the process right now of applying for a DNR grant for this work, and at a future work session, we would like the opportunity to bring a DNR representative and kind of talk through what some of these programs look like, what those staffing efforts would be, and receive some policy direction on that. This is not a requirement by the state, and it's something that we would be undertaking per what we would like to. The parking requirements, this was something that was added to the budget document regarding parking and how the city establishes the need for parking based on seats. The request was to look at occupancy rather than the amount of seats. Staff does believe that parking is a a larger issue, however, given the scope of what else has been deemed high and medium, it it fell to low, not to say that we don't believe that it's important. And I should say, with anything that is kind of a lower priority, they were also projects that were not and I apologize for not saying this earlier, things that were low priority are projects that would not take as much effort as others. And so, for instance, the the parking or the Historic Preservation Board creation, that's something that if we had some time, you know, in between projects that we could get done, you know, maybe in a couple of months versus six months. And so, you know, it would be nice to have a prioritization of something that's on the low on the low side from council, so that we know if we have some spare time, we know what to work on first. Let's see. Zoning and land use map consistency. This is a medium because it can be done through the comprehensive plan. And so if we don't get to work on this right now, we will definitely, it will be on the work program within the comprehensive plan update. Essentially, what this is is in the city's history of conducting land use map amendments, which are comprehensive plan amendments that change the underlying comp plan designation of a property, the city unfortunately did not assign consistent zoning with parcels when they gave them new comp plan designations. Therefore, we have parcels across the city that have inconsistent comprehensive plan designations from their zoning, and what that means is when the property owner comes into us and says, I would like to do something that's consistent with the comp plan, they can't do that because they would need a rezone, and those things should have been done consistently. And so what we would like to do is analyze through GIS all of the parcels within the city, look for areas where they're inconsistent and then go through and either change the comp plan designation to be consistent with the zoning or vice versa, depending on what council desires, and the planning commission would recommend this to you, obviously. Some examples of this are Speedy Auto Glass on Stinson and Harborview. Their designation is for believe R2 Pearl, correct me if I'm wrong, a medium density residential, and their zoning is R1. And so, right now, if they were to redevelop that parcel, they would need to either re-designate the comp plan or rezone, which is a cumbersome process for for the property owner, and it's not it's not ideal for the city. Another instance of this is the the gravel mine where the Henderson Burnham Project is occurring. The the zoning and the comprehensive plan are inconsistent there that has created a an issue for the city, and so we'd like to clean those up. The next one on the list is HOA Fair. This is a a great idea that Adam Blodgett brought up a while ago, and it's kind of grown. But the intent of this would be to get the board members from all the HOAs in the community together at least once a year to introduce them to city government, let them know where they can, you know, what is an HOA responsibility, what is the city's responsibility, and, you know, if it is a city's responsibility, who should they contact? This is, it's low, that doesn't mean we don't think it's important, but it, you know, again, with everything else that was on the on the list, it was low because it's not required. However, it is one of those items that would not take as much effort as some of the others, and we could add on as necessary. And the final two are the annexing of the two Crescent Creek Parcels at Crescent Creek Park, which are, I believe, the Roar Property and the Masonic Lodge Property. And then the next one is annexation of the Lighthouse and the Spit. What I will say about these is they can be done anytime, there's not a requirement. However, we put it as a low priority because unfortunately, Pierce County, when they removed East Bay from the UGA, the intent and within the ordinance was stated that the city wanted the spit and the lighthouse to be left within the UGA, so we could annex that parcel into our city because our wastewater main pipe goes directly underneath that. Unfortunately, in the ordinance, the adopting ordinance at Pierce County, they removed the lighthouse and the spit from the urban growth area. So we cannot annex it at this time because it's illegal for a city to annex a piece of rural land. So that being said, Carl's been working with Dan Cardwell of Pierce County, and they should be, we expect, and we've been following up with them, that they will be including that back into the UGA by the end of June this year, and then after that time, we could annex that into the city. And so that's why those are low. They're both low, because what we would prefer to do is conduct all of the annexations at one time. It is a pretty time-consuming process, and it's better to do multiple through one rather than taking the amount of effort it would take to do one and pushing it forward. Councilmember Rothenberg?
Yes, if if we're going to be visioning Crescent Creek Park and the Masonic and how the Masonic Lodge is going to play into that, should we go ahead with what we're going to do with the Masonic Lodge without having it actually annexed, or does it delay one or the other, or is that been a consideration?
Yes, that 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 was a consideration, and I talked to a couple of other council members about that as well, so it's a great question. I think I believe the, well, I know the visioning can occur with with it, without it being annexed. We just know and and let Matthew know that we're going to be annexing this, assume that it's going to be within the city. We would just need to, prior to any permitting going forward, this would need to be annexed into our city or else the Masonic Lodge and the other property would be subject to Pierce County regulations and the other city, which is not ideal. So we're not proposing to move this off too far. We would like to get this done at minimum by spring of next year. You know, and obviously sooner if possible, but I believe the visioning, you know, will take the rest of this year, so I think the timelines can match up. Councilmember Henderson, you're welcome.
Thank you. This is probably a question for you and one for Matt, too. When I read to the pros plan, there was a recommendation to bring the sand spit lighthouse into the UGA, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, we want it brought into the city. I think you just clarified that that sand spit lighthouse is not even in our UGA, it's in, it's considered rural.
It is.
Okay.
Yes, and Pierce County has, we have it in writing, they've acknowledged their error and that they're actively working to correct that.
Okay, but eventually, we would like to bring that into the city as well, right?
Correct, as soon as, as soon as possible, and so we'd like to do these annexations at the same time if possible.
Makes sense.
Councilmember Barber, you're welcome.
As a follow-up to Councilmember Henderson's question, that in the pros plan, we mentioned the Lighthouse Spit as being a city park. But if it's not in the city, how can it be a be classified as a city park? So it seems like we probably need to amend that portion where that's mentioned in the pros plan before we approve that next Monday.
My professional recommendation would be to keep it the way it is. I think if anyone had a question with it, we could say the city owns it.
Okay.
And and therefore, it's a city park, and then we also have the intention, explicit direction rather through this to go forward with an annexation. So I think I would leave the language as is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had two quick comments. In terms of prioritizing the low priority items, I would put a vote in to prioritizing the parking requirements. It's one of the first things to get done. If we can get to it, I think that's really important. And then the other thing, when you were talking about the HOA Fair, it made me think about the conversation that Mayor Markley and I have had with you, um, Director Knutson, about doing something proactively for people considering doing business in the city of Gig Harbor, and that would be a low as well, but some sort of workshop that would be widely advertised, something like, you know, what you need to know to do business in Gig Harbor, where your staff and maybe public works staff talks about traffic impact fees and ERUs and parking requirements and all that stuff that nobody seems to think about till they've signed a lease somewhere, and then they're upset because it's going to be so expensive. So if we could add that as another low priority, I think that would be really great for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. I will note that, and I know you can't necessarily see it that close up, but I I took the liberty of putting together goals or implementing actions for the council's five goals that were established at the the retreat. And in at least two of the categories, that discussion about helping businesses and communicating better is brought up in those, and I believe those will be coming to council soon. But I will absolutely add the, what should I call that?
I think it was like a yearly business development workshop. I think we've mentioned some, something like that.
How does Business Assistance Workshop sound? Okay. I think that's good. Councilmember Denson, I don't, I know if you can see, but we added that on to the low list here that's on the screen.
I trust you.
Okay, so I've I've broken this down. I'm a very visual individual, and I know people visualize things in different ways, so we provided one way in the packet. This is another way to look at how many high, medium and lows we have, and you can see I just put asterisks next to parking requirements, HOA Fair and Business Assistance Workshop on the low priority.
Can you increase that size any at all?
What was that?
Can you increase the size of this document at all?
Maybe I can. Slide show.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, this is exactly what we just talked about, but seeing it differently in a different manner. So maybe we go to the next slide and then come back to the low. I'm also you know, interested from council's perspective, if there's anything from a high that you think can move to medium and vice versa. But I do think the low, the low part here are items that we intend to do and can fit in maybe as necessary. They're not, again, the larger levels of effort that the ones to the left of that are. So for those other very visual learners like me, I've done a 2022 year with arrows, and the arrows notate Notate. The time in which this would be in process. And um, just very quickly before we go over it, like to point out the first three efforts are going to be wrapping up. Before the half point of the year. And the last three efforts on this page, you'll see the green circle continued into twenty twenty-three. So those arrows are not meant to notate that that project would be done by the end of the year, but rather would be extending into twenty twenty-three. So we can see here that the UGA analysis, we're hoping to wrap that up by April, by the end of April, as well as the transitional housing and emergency shelter. Ordinance. Short term rentals, that effort is a a pretty substantial effort right now. For all of us, there's been a. Lot of public comment, a lot of work going into that, and we expect that that will be completed by the end of June. Um, let's see, the twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan amendments, those were the for the pros plan updates, the uh. Capital facilities consistency, the storm water and climate change that would start in March and then continue. Uh, through November. The housing needs assessment would start when the UGA analysis, transitional housing and short term rentals are starting to die down. When we would have uh, staff capacity to work on that. Prior to that, we would go out for a request for proposals. So there would be some work prior to April. Uh, for interviewing, et cetera, but that would extend through the end of this year as well. Uh, urban forestry, we would anticipate uh, applying for the DNR grant. Um, by the due date, Carl, when is that due? Can you remind me?
It's due March fourth. Uh, the the grant applications do March fourth. And I was going to say also, Katrina, I think that one could also move into, continue into twenty twenty-three.
Good point. Thank you. Uh, the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan update, the within the budget are the money that we can allocate begins in June. And that would be for the public process. So that would extend into twenty twenty-three and then twenty-four. The design manual, if all goes well, we're anticipating being able to initiate that effort later this year, late summer. As well as the zoning map consistencies. Of course, the zoning map. Uh, consistency changes. If acceptable to council, we can move those into the comprehensive plan update and potentially move something else into that slot. Um, are there any questions or did I miss anything? Yes, Councilmember Rook.
This seems like a heavy workload. And uh, do you have the staff that you need? Do you need more staff? What can we do to help you get these many projects done?
Thank you, Councilmember. This is a a very heavy workload. What I, what I would like to do is be able to give you a for sure answer on the total FTE and hours associated with this. I hesitated to do it prior to this meeting, not knowing what the council was going to. Kind of prioritize work plan wise. I've been looking at some, what some other cities have done in hiring temporary contract planners to come in for certain projects. So for instance, that could be the design manual, that could be. Uh, urban forestry where they come in for a specific purpose, work until the project's done. And I'm looking to see what that would cost to bring someone on, an additional person for, you know, a a term position. And, you know, we could give them two of the larger projects and have them. Run that through, but um. I think, I think. My professional opinion is that we could get most of this work completed. Obviously, if we want to get some of the other items, you know, peppered in here in a more um. For sure pattern, if we would need to look at probably hiring a. A a term planner for a year.
Seems to me, just seems to me that there's a lot of work and we've got some things that are important that are even on the low end. And and if we had someone else come in for a while, some of these items um. That are, that are are low, but that are still important, might be able to get done, whether it is having somebody like you say, working on the urban forestry. But um, I I certainly would like to see uh, exactly what your hours would be for current staff and what you think. Uh, could be done um. With a a a temporary, somebody coming in for a specific, I I I would like to see what that cost is and. And what the projects would be able to get done that might not be done. And um, I would, I would be very interested in seeing that.
All right, I'm just taking some notes here.
I mean, it seems like we're all interested in getting these things done and um. It's important, I think.
Get out.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we will um, after this. Task the, task the hours and look at the the cost for a a term planner.
If I could just add to what to that, when you cost it. Cost it. With some. Um. Flex in there. So that you're really costing it with you guys. Having some ability to do other duties as assigned that you know we're going to come across the hip. The transom so that you're not one hundred percent filling your slate with these projects. So we know we can get them done. I'm really concerned about the workload as Councilmember Wook said.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Katrina. So when you go through this analysis, as an ex resource planner, when I had to get a lot of work done. Some options are either hiring people straight away, which you've kind of mentioned, a term employee. Or hiring permanent staff, which is a a tends to be a longer term cost to the city. Uh, but also keep in mind, you might, some of this could be easily. Uh, contracted out. Clearly, you might need a term person to write scopes of work and oversee the projects, but there's some tasks here that. Uh, would benefit from having consultants come in and get a lot of it done. And then the city. Takes it from there and moves it to the final piece. So it has our, it has our quote unquote DNA on it. We don't trust everything that. Consultants do, but I I think that's another option for you as well as. Some of this could be given off to consultants overseen by city staff. Um, and that is kind of a force multiplier is what we used to call it. You know, I think, I know. So that's another option that. You might want to look at as well, because I, I I too see this as a tremendous amount of work and. When you sit down and start adding up what it's going to take to do some of these, especially things like the climate change, which. Um, I would definitely want more than a cut and paste, let's put climate change back in there and call it a day. That's uh. Uh, we just won't be doing that. So that's going to take a lot of work and, but I'd like it done right. So. Anyway, keep, keep that option on the table too is. Temporary people writing scopes of work for consultants overseeing the work and we can generally get a lot more done. Thanks.
You. Let's see. All right, I feel like I've talked for, I have talked for an hour. Um. Sorry about that.
Um, I apologize, Katrina. This was an excellent, excellent presentation and I thank you, council, for appreciating the workload. It's easier to see it once it's just out there on paper rather than just talking about it. And so I appreciate you. Being supportive of adding to our team if that's what we need to do to be able to, you know, get all of these projects done. And you know, I support that as well. So. Um, was there anything else, Katrina or Carl, that you? Wanted to add to um, kind of just wrap up or?
Well. I guess if there's anything that council feels like is on a medium. Or low list that a hundred percent needs to get done this year that we didn't have on the list. I think we would want to know that policy direction from council. Now. If possible. Um. And and again, that would help us to scope out, you know, amount of hours, look at staff and, you know, kind of turn that around. Quickly. To start working on them. Okay. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. I I know I've been chatting with some other council members, the growth of the comp plan update. I I just want to make sure that if we continue with the medium priority that it's got and it looks like it. Would be done by June twenty twenty-four, that there's something, there's other actions that we could not take that would be, like for instance, Urban Force Management Plan. Uh, the last thing I want to hear is, well, we can't do anything on that until twenty twenty-four, then we can work on that. Or we can't do an interim code changes or something. So if if you could. Relatively ensure that a medium rating and. I don't want to say pushing it to twenty twenty-four, but doing it in twenty twenty-four, we don't lose the opportunity to get other work done.
Um. And that was the twenty twenty-four periodic update?
Comp plan update. It's on page two oh four.
Yes, I I feel strongly that that one can stay medium and we can start in June. That would give us a two, two full years to accomplish the comp plan update. Um, and I think that that is more than enough time. With that, we do have money slated for the comp plan update for public outreach for the rest, for this year, June to December, kind of. Taking the community's temperature on various things. But I do think starting in June is, will provide us adequate time.
Okay, but would that prevent us from taking any interim steps, like with climate change or?
No, no. And recall that we'll have, we have the docket item coming forward for, to update the comp plan this year for those.
Okay.
For those items.
Okay. Let's see.
Councilmember Rook.
Uh, yes, uh, the design manual update. Uh, it's on medium. I think maybe it needs to be a little bit more stressed there and I'd like to see it on high. Seems to be important. And the parking requirements, it's on low. I'd like to see it on medium. And I'd like to say, I guess what I'd like to see is the time involved and the money involved. And if those ca- things can be done with extra staff, whether it's. Temporary or they just come in to do something specific. They seem to be important and um. Uh, and something that would be good for our citizens.
Great. Is there council support for what Councilmember Wook said? If there is support or majority support for that, I can cost out. Everything of what it would take to put the design manual. High and parking medium.
Do you want us to raise our hands?
Yeah, please raise your hands. It's hard. I see heads nodding, but hard to, okay, so one, two, three. Looks like majority support, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Storset.
Yes, thank you. Well, Katrina, thank you very much for pulling this together. It's great to see so many things. And I know we were all probably being like held back and even having more comments and discussions. So. Look forward to more of these study sessions when you bring more of the full picture together. Um, so thank you for that. I did have a question, but I think I'll just, I think I'll just wait. I don't have any other things to change on the priority list. Um, my only thoughts and kind of some reservations, I guess I had on. How we have prioritized and doing this retreat, which I thought was awesome to have the combination of of city council and staff. Um, you know, but when I think back on those votes and how things were prioritized, I just want to make sure, you know, that we're, I guess, feeling consistent, you know, that everybody's feeling good about how that, what that outcome was. Um, because obviously there was, you know, there was some, there was what, thirty people on the call or so? Um, so I just think that if anybody else had a concern in that area and, you know, I did, I unfortunately did not save that. You can go back and look in the video if you want to know the votes and how that came out, but. Um, but I just thought it was interesting, a unique approach, but just want to make sure the council is, um, you know, good with that. What we did, you know, with including the staff and all that. So that's it.
Yeah, I think that that brings up a really good point that I was talking to a different council member about yesterday was. You know, staff in our role, we're not elected officials. We're here to serve you, to serve the public. And so although we have professional opinions about getting things done and how to get things done in particular. You know, it really isn't coming upon us as, you know, public officials to make sure that. We're doing with the will of the, the people and that's through you. And so I think that, you know, these touch points help us make sure that we are doing what. What the policymakers want us to do and we're not kind of taking this and running with it on our own vision. Because. It's your vision and the community's vision that. Matter. And if you have a question about this outside of this, uh, Councilmember Storset, feel free to give me a call.
Okay, thank you. No, I just, something I wanted to put out there. We don't have to go to a full discussion unless somebody wants to, but maybe it's for another time. I think we're, I think we're good. Thank you.
Councilmember Barber.
Um, I would like to um. Hear, and again, probably not today, what it would entail to put the Historic Preservation Board creation. As a medium priority, because I see that being. Kind of part of the comp plan, everything ties together. And if, it seems like if we leave that component out, it's kind of just. Hanging there in a less than cohesive manner. And so I guess I'd like to. Look at moving that up to a medium priority or at least seeing what it would take to get it done this year. Um, and do you need resources for the annexation projects? For the spit in Crescent Creek or is that, we're just, that's a time situation waiting for Pierce County to, to do something? Because those seem like important pieces as well.
Um. Thank you, Councilmember Barber. So for, let's break that into two. So for the Historic Preservation Board, moving to medium, um, Mayor, I would like to know if there's. Majority support to do that. And then we can cost out what that would be. A show of hands for that. One, two, three, four. C four, so yes. Okay. Um. And then regarding annexations, it's both, it's both Pierce County and staff time. It's, it would be pretty intensive on the staff person that's going to conduct the annexations. Um, it would be great to have Matt's support on that, but we know that Matt is only one person. And he has his plate full with other things as well.
But his is superhuman, so.
Wow, right. Wow. He's superhuman, so, you know.
Katrina, you may not remember fifteen years ago, I was the annexation planner and I almost went crazy.
We don't want that. Well, we'll have you tip your toe and how's that? Keep you involved. Um, but yes, I, I want to make sure that Pierce, my recommendation would be to make sure that Pierce County gets the spit in. And Carl has been doing a great job following up on that. And then we can, we'll. Kind of later this year.
Figure it out then.
Process, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to tap.
Obviously with the goal of wanting to have it annexed. Prior to when Matt would be submitting for permits. So we'll, we'll coordinate on that and make sure that gets done.
Yeah, Matt may have to stick his toe back in that water if it's getting too close.
Maybe two toes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, I I just wanted to say something, uh. Uh, it had to do with council members, storsets and Director Knutson's comments about. S- staff and council working well together. You know, we are the policymakers, but uh. We are not the professional people that the directors and managers have. The expertise in their individual fields. And I've seen it not so much with this council, a little bit, but I've seen it in past years where uh, we. Some of us don't stay in our lane. Some of us should give the expert, the experts uh, more latitude in what they decide. And we should stick to what we know and that's policymaking. Uh, it, we can work well together in that regard, but. Let's don't get in the way of uh, the directors and uh, managers doing their jobs. They are the professionals. They're hired to do it. We get a measly pay. They get the big bucks, so. We should pay attention to that, in my opinion.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Rodenberg. Um, it looks like I have, we have our, our marching orders. We're going to go back, reevaluate based on the nods that were given for design manual parking and Historic Preservation Board. Cost out what that would be, both in terms of temporary and uh. Potentially bringing on additional consultants and look at providing that back to council for discussion on that. Um, in the meantime, it sounds like we have general. Um, direction that the high priority items, both the ones that are underway and will be soon underway, that we will get to work on those. And we can fine tune the rest of this at an upcoming work session regarding additional assistance.
Sounds great.
I really appreciate the council's participation in this today. It really helps us to make sure that we're. Going down the right path.
Thank you. Thank you again so much to all of, all of our staff that are working so very. Thank you. Thank you again so much to all of, all of our staff that are working so very hard. We really appreciate you all very much. Um, if there is nothing else, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make much we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, the ayes have it. Motion, uh, media adjourn. Thank you all so much. Have a good night.
Later.
Good night.
Good night.